What's difficult is when you have to do what's in the best interest of all children. And I think that's something that this group does particularly well. In addition to always having the best interest of students in the forefront, I'm also continually impressed, and I think our staff is continually impressed, is how they're able to have our teachers in the forefront of all good things. Because we all know that we love our kids so much. The most important position in the district is that teacher sitting in that classroom with those students. And this board is always thinking about how is this going to affect teachers? What can we do to help teachers? Especially in the last couple of years, it's been so hard on teachers. That's always on the forefront of the trustee's mind as well. And so I honestly can look at each of them in the eye and say, you guys are an inspiration to me. You're an inspiration to all of our staff. I know our parents feel the same way. Dana, I don't know if you want to add anything to that, but this is what this school board recognition is all about.
Yeah, I echo Frank's sentiments for each one of you and the partnership and our team of eight. I like to take a personal moment of privilege during board appreciation to just say a couple words about our board president. We are a unique board in that that position rotates every year. And I just will share words of appreciation, gratitude for your leadership. This has been a very difficult seat to fill with some interesting challenges that we face together as a team. But the way that you have prioritized collaboration and partnership around the table, thoughtfulness, determination, and just again, what I call steadfast leadership during some challenging tasks. And so I appreciate you, and all of us do. I appreciate everyone in you around the table. Thank you for all you do for our students and for our staff.
Yeah, round of applause. Thank you for that one recognition that we could not kick from the next slide.
We could have passed on it, but thank you very much. With that, we will move to section three, citizens to be heard. We've received two requests to speak on public comment about items that are not on the agenda. In order to facilitate an orderly meeting and respect all participants' comments and in the interest of conducting an efficient meeting, we just ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. As usual, Alicia will hold up a card when you have one minute left. Then she'll hold up a card when your time is up. We ask that you stop when your time is up so that we can respect the time of everyone in the room. Also, we ask that in making your presentations that you not name any individual employee of the district or student. Remember, we're in a public setting. This is being broadcast. So we ask that you not identify anyone specifically, but address issues generally. With that, we are ready to begin. And our first person will be Mr. Carlos Reyes, and then Ms. Lisa Fox will be our second speaker. Mr. Reyes, when you're ready, just come to the table. You can have a seat. If you prefer to stand, you can stand, but you're welcome to. It's unusual, we're back here at the boardroom, so have a seat.
Thank you. All right, well, my name is Carlos Reyes. I have four students in Alma Heights District, two that are not in District right now. What I wanted to discuss was the F and G process. As a parent that has personally gone through this process, I feel that it's very inadequate and does not truly address the concerns that a lot of parents do have. I think in writing the process, it's more geared towards the schools than necessarily towards the parents. I also would like to say, I think the outcomes are also more geared towards the school's favor. And the reason why I say that is because in filling out the report, you don't 100% get an accurate idea of what you're dealing with with the information that is provided by the school and/or teachers. I find it very hard and very much of a challenge to be able to complete something like that that's that important without having all the materials you would need necessary to make a decision. I think it really needs to be looked at also on the timeframes of how much time you're allowed to speak about the issue itself. In reality, I think it really comes back to, I think, almost a waste of time. It feels as though that these complaints aren't being heard. And I think there's a lot more out there that hasn't been seen or has gone through this process and probably feel the way that I do. Now, seeing that my son was a victim of bullying here and how easily it could have been swept under the table, I just see it as a failure from the district itself. And I don't feel like this is the first one or first incident. So I really think that schools should take a look deeper into what's going on here and what's being done about it. I mean, there's all kinds of different things that can be done. Obviously, we can try to teach kids to be able to endure more challenges, be able to, I guess, be prepared to be bullied. I feel like this is something that's inevitable more towards the minority students as opposed to the, you know, the other side of it. And I mean, I just think it's sad. It is a huge letdown and a huge disappointment. I'm absolutely dissatisfied with this district and the way that they handled this. It was more of a district versus the parents as opposed to let's find a solution. It was more of a I got you because you didn't say this or that. There was no outreach among other parents. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so I want to talk about the teachers. Last meeting, last week, we talked about raising the pay for the substitutes. And I felt think that was a great thing to raise the pay for substitutes. That was one thing I had seen when considering substituting at other districts with the pay. And what I see San Antonio was beating you guys out, pay for substitutes. So I think that was a good thing that they raised the pay for substitutes. I think that will bring more people into our district that want to substitute now. But I know that the teachers got a little bit of a raise this year, but I think we should really, really reconsider and think about paying our teachers more. We say Alma Heights excellency, we should pay excellent. We don't pay excellent right now. We rank, I think, in the middle right now in San Antonio, Texas, for our pay for our teachers. As much as these teachers do, I've seen it, we don't pay them enough. We really don't. I also would ask the board in the district to provide the teachers in this district with adequate masks for the COVID outbreaks, sanitizers for them if they want. I think it should be more strongly encouraging to wear masks. I like videos I've seen of the district leaders wearing masks in videos at schools. I think that is so much better than before. I know that it's against a lot of parents of masking your children. But I really think when there's this many numbers of COVID cases spreading, I think we really, really should encourage masks and impossible for the mask mandate go against the governor, like so many other districts in San Antonio have done. The training of our teachers does happen at the beginning of the year, I've heard. But obviously, it's not working because over eight minutes of crowds, 20 individuals followed my son, and only two boys were reported to have touched my son in the whole eight minutes. And as my rights from the Open Meetings Act apply, imply, I would like to request that the following subjects be included in our next meeting agenda: class ranking and how we provide that information to our students. I do believe in mental health, and I know how it would affect my daughter next year to find out her ranking. And that's all I have to say, say, thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. That concludes the citizens to be heard, part of our agenda. As usual, we appreciate you all taking the time to come and speak to us. We will now move on to section four, items for presentation or possible action. First one will be Board Goal One, student learning and progress. And the first item under that is the compliance support programs, presentations bilingual. Well, that one's being moved to February. We'll look at the notes. So we're going to item two, compliance annual report and TAPER presentation. The same presenter, Dr. Jimmy Walker.
Yeah, thank you for that. So the bilingual presentation, we did purposely move it to February so that we will have, be doing it in front of a larger audience and we'll have everyone there. So tonight is, think of it as a precursor because it's similar to the bilingual in that they're both going to be talking about data and student achievement. So TAPER stands for Texas Academic Performance Record. This is a compliance public presentation. It is a public posting. The entire TAPER report, all 26 pages of it, I believe, are included in the board book and will also be posted online. So there are five sections that we'll be going over: accreditation status, attendance and graduation rates, student's profile, academic performance report and post-secondary report. I will say with TAPER, we have a love-hate relationship with TAPER. We love that it is robust data. We love that it has been collected over 20 years. We love that it's collected for every school district so that we can look and see how we compare to other districts. What we don't love is the timeliness of it. So we get TAPER mid-December and it's reporting out its lagging indicators. So it's data from last school years and in some case, the year even prior to that. So as we do go through these five sessions, I'll point out what year this data is from. And I'll say, because we aren't, we don't like the timeliness of it, through community-based accountability, a lot of the things that we're required to present, I've already completed, could talk through. So next slide, Alicia, thank you. So our accreditation status, all schools in the state of Texas, all districts, were not rated, declared state of disaster. Special education was determination status, was meets requirement. It is, I believe, the intent and I expectation that next year we will go back to the A to F system for accountability. So the first thing we'll talk about is attendance and graduation rates. On the left, you see a four-year trend. And then on the right, you see a comparison to Texas. The attendance rate, this is for 2019, 2020. You'll notice that it is exceptionally high. That is because that last quarter of the year, we were all at home. The state of Texas did not collect attendance data, so we were at 99% attendance. Graduation rates, you'll note that we consistently sit at 97%. We remained at 97% in 2019, 2020. By comparison, state of Texas is at 90% graduation rate. Thank you, Alicia, one. The next card is comparing teacher and student demographics. You'll note that we have representative comparison, meaning that some populations that are in our student are represented in our teacher population. Huge kudos and congratulations to Frank Standage for our teacher expectations for when we hire someone are exceptionally high. We're not lowering that, but we're expanding our outreach to have a bigger pool to draw from for candidates. So online job fairs, we can interview folks that are not here in San Antonio but might be interested in moving to San Antonio, forming relationships with universities so that we do have a direct pathway to that candidate pipeline. Next one. So looking deeper into our student profile, this has three years' worth of data and then comparison, Texas comparison on the right. Our enrollment has, is fairly stable over the last three years. Economically disadvantaged did take a slight dip. But of note, what we're noticing now is that we are, our counselors and administrative teams are talking more about situational hardship, meaning that it's a family that was financially stable and then because of job loss, illness, their family's taken, hopefully, temporary turn. And campuses are dealing with more temporary hardships rather than long-term. By comparison, state of Texas is 60% economically disadvantaged students in our schools. Emergent bilingual sits right around 6%. Texas comparison is at 20. Bilingual programs rose because that is our English students who are included in our dual-language classes. That remains robust. Special education did show a slight increase in percentage of students which is needing special ed services. But of note, if that's an incremental increase, CTE programs are almost exponential because we go 3.5%, double to seven, double to 15. So, and that's before this year where we even had to add another culinary teacher. So that really is an increase. It's a huge celebration. Gifted and talented likewise has shown a slight increase every year. We'll be talking more about that in February and March when we do work into a talented program review. Next one, Alicia. Educator profile, as I said before, our criteria and expectations to be a teacher in Alma Heights remain strong and high. Our number of teachers is stable, went up by two. But we have about half of our teachers who have a higher degree compared to 25% in the state. Our percentage of students, teachers, excuse me, with five or more years of experience is at 80% compared to 65% in the state. Years with the district remains consistent. Do you remember last year when we did TAPER, we really had some questions about the turnover rate? Because the year before for us, it took a jump to 15%. Last year, it went back down to 10%, which again is lower than this date. Teacher salary is barely flat. But of note, last year, we did go through that salary audit, augmented the salary for particular roles and for all as well. So we'll see how that number comes out next year. And the number of students per teacher remains consistent and below the state average. As stated, I've already come to you, we've talked about star scores twice. So tonight, I'll just give a couple highlights. This is all subjects, all grades. The dark blue is Alma Heights. The light gray is just our region, Bear County. And the light blue is Texas. Approaches means you can think of it kind of like making a C. So this is last year's data, last year's star. 80% of all students on all tests made at least approaches or above compared to 64% in the region, 67% in the state. If we look at meets, which is making a V, again, we outperform the region and the state. And when we look at a masters, which is only missing one or two questions on the star, we're at just by a third of our students, which again far exceeds the region of the state. And that was last year during the pandemic. You all have seen this, the next slide, at least twice before, probably more. But it's worth reiterating that when we do look at our star scores, they did decline. Everything up there in red font is where our score did decline from prior year. But when you compare it to the Texas scores, which are on the right, everything in green is where our students, for instance, L for one, we went down two percentage points, whereas the state of Texas went down 12. So while there was a decline in score, we did not see the impact on our students that was seen across the state or across the nation, entirely due to the hard work of our teachers and our students and our community just wrapping their arms around our schools. Of note, there are targeted areas where we did see a greater impact, mostly in those middle years. And we've devoted additional intervention resources. We added staffing position. Dan, if you'll go to the next slide, Alicia.
I'll let you get your breath in one second. And I'm going to interject that you're on the roll.
I am on the roll.
Thank you.
Victor Pace.
I do want to just remind you all that we have committed to a pretty robust campus checkup process where we meet with, are you getting it?
I am.
I'm a little bit.
That's okay.
But we are going to bring that information to you. I think it's next month that we come to you with a presentation about where we are on that data. So that's not something that we show you one time and say we're working on without bringing it back to you. Go ahead.
Perfect. You put me right where I wanted to go, which is just summarizing the fact that our scores did decline, but we not see as great an impact as we did across the state. We have devoted additional tutoring as well as academic and behavioral services because we did see students who were having some significant behavioral challenges after being out of school for almost two years. We devoted that because you can't get to academic growth until you have addressed some behavioral needs. And augmenting what Dana just said, we have seen preliminary rebounding scores. But in February, we will do our, have results from our middle-of-year screener. Every student grade pre-K to 12, reading and math. We did it in the fall, so we'll be able to see the pace for which our students are growing and rebounding. In March, we do an interim assessment, which mirrors, it's shorter than the start, but we will have those scores and will be projected over the course of the spring.
I have someone who texts me, he's listening online, asking if there's a place online where they could see this data that you're sharing with us?
Yeah, absolutely. You can go to TAPER, just TAPER, T E A T A R, Alma Heights, and get all 24 pages of it.
Okay, cool.
And it also will be posted on our website next week.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You are very welcome. All right, next one, Alicia. So now we'll talk about post-secondary. And as untimely as talking about last spring's star today in January is, when we talk about TAPER, go to the next slide, Alicia, and college and career military readiness, it's pulling data from 19, 20, and 18, 19. So our district in terms of college, career, and military readiness, we were at 73.7% of our annual graduates needing those threshold amount, threshold PET scores compared to 57% in our region and 63% in the state. And in the next slide, Alicia, if we get into that, what that is, and we talk about AP scores first, and then we'll talk about SAT, ACT. And this is AP participation. So in TAPER, it pulls out the number of percentage of students in grades 11 and 12 who took an AP course. So in Alma Heights in 2020, we were at 39.4% of our students in 11 and 12 grades taking an AP course. The year prior, we were at 40%, so that's fairly stable. When you compare it to Texas, Texas is at 22% of students taking an AP course, at least one. Below is the percentage, it's the percentage of the 39%. Does that make sense? So last year, we were at 79% of students in juniors and seniors who took an AP course who scored a three or higher. The reason why that matters is APs are scored on a one to five. Students who earn a three or higher are eligible for college credit. So compared to the state, they're at 59%, so again, exceeding the state. And even when you look at national, which is not in TAPER, Alma Heights also exceeds national standards on that. Looking at the SAT, of note, Alma Heights did see a decline in scores, 1174 to 1160. But this was seen across Texas and the nation because of, remember what year this is from, 2020, the number of universities that went test optional, the number of SAT test administrations that were canceled. So our participation rate, which is not put in TAPER, was much lower. So that does explain that. This year's data, which we will look at next year's paper, did show a rebound in scores. And our ACT remained stable while it declined statewide. So we have talked through educator and student profile. We talked through attendance, we've talked through graduation, star, and post-secondary programs, all of which is outlined in detail in the paper, which will be posted online, included in your board book, and is also readily available online. And that's it. You said a radiated board meeting.
David. Comment question?
Yes.
So comment, really credit to our teachers, to our educators, that AP test participation and performance when compared to the state? I was talking to some parents, some, another district in the area last night, and they said there is no opportunity. When they got to college, they didn't know that opportunity was still available. Kudos to you guys and to our teachers on the front lines. Just a random question on the career tech, like, you know, the state number was like 58% or something. Is there like some big class we don't have or we're missing? That's right. That's right.
Yeah, the largest CTE pathway is agriculture. And we don't have, because they have everything from meatpacking farm, agriculture, and we don't do any of, we don't have any of those pathways here.
So we have those cleared lots down the street.
We do, of note, we do recognize kids who do participate in FFA independently or through other organizations and do provide some time for them participating in that.
Right.
For a twenty-two.
Any other questions or comments? Dr. Walker, as usual, thank you very much.
You are very welcome.
Okay, we are going to go to item B1, and this is under Board Goal Seven, Fiscal and Operational Systems, Consideration of Approval of Architectural Services for the 2023 bond. And presenter will be Dr. Dana Bisher.
Certainly. So you have received the board resolution packet prior to today. But just for big picture overview, we have engaged the last few months in a pretty extensive RFQ process that started with about 11 different bid packages submitted to our building committee. The building committee spent lots of time looking at all the information that was provided to come up with three firms that we brought to the entire board for an interview process. Heard feedback about those presentations, dug into some references and additional information through our administrative team, and are bringing you a final recommendation. We are really excited and feel confident about continuing our work and our partnership with LPA. You're going to have to read the part of the resolution.
Before we do that, any comments or questions?
Appreciate the work of the committee that had to go through all of the applications and all the streamlined work for the board. I know they put a ton of time into it, a ton of extra time into it. And so I'm very grateful for the folks on the committee that worked through all that stuff so that we got an efficient, valuable process.
I second that. And I'd also thank the group of architects. I know as winnowing it down to three was hard. Then the administration all winnowing it down to one was impressive. But we had a lot of great architectural firms, which, very impressive. It's hard to pick one. That being said, I'll read the part of the resolution we have to read. Be hereby resolved that the board selects LPA Inc. as the most highly qualified architect based on demonstrated competence and qualification. The board delegates authority to the superintendent or her designee authority to take all necessary actions in compliance with Chapter 2254 of the Government Code to negotiate and execute a contract for a fair and reasonable price and other terms beneficial to the district. And the board further delegates to the superintendent or her designee authority to terminate negotiations and engage in the same process with the next most highly qualified architect if a contract for a fair and reasonable price cannot be negotiated with LPA Inc. That being said, is there, do I have a motion to approve the consideration of approval of architectural services for the 2023 bond? David, do I have a second? Carrie, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? The motion carries for to zero. With that, we will move on to consideration of substitute staff compensation. Our presenter will be Mr. Frank Standage. Frank, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Standage. I just want to start by saying that I'm usually really good at predicting like personnel trends, but when it comes to snow day board meeting and hires, I appreciate that. I'm going to go logging.
I thought you rode your snowmobile.
So, joyous occasion, being able to present these rights to you today. I'm going to keep this very brief for the sake of meeting everyone through the meeting. But just some items I'd like to highlight outside of this slide. Said, our subpool theme depleted here in town for a number of reasons. One is that there are the S R funded positions that are augmenting learning on campuses. Those have pulled subs out away from everyone's pool. Put them in the classroom, so that's lower availability. We've also seen some mid-year retirements with educators who decided other than going till the end of the school year, they instead retired in December. That means that subs have to be hired into those classroom positions, and then that creates a smaller pool. And then there's the fear of COVID, which is still alive and well where I'm from. So we saw during this school year that school districts preemptively raised their rates, and in some cases significantly. So combined with the shrinking subpool, the higher rates that our districts are paying, we find ourselves in a position of having to recommend the raise in subrates outside of the normal budget center. And that's what I want to present to you today. My estimate is that in order to raise to these rates that you see on the screen, it'll cost us about $125,000 per year, we estimate, and that money will come out of the general fund. If you approve it, we would just amend these rates to the current question. You'll see on the second row of the slide that those are the rates that we are proposing. Right above those are the yellow, our current rates. With these newer rates, it'll get us competitive. We won't be the highest, but we also won't be the lowest. We can also sustain these rates going into the out years and it'll keep us competitive, at least as far as we're concerned. Do you have any questions?
For Dana.
Yep.
The only question I have is...
Another question, Ryan, is how, I was with a group of parents that don't have kids in the district anymore, and they were all saying that they would love to substitute. Couple of them substitute through CASA. I'm not sure what that, you know, route is, but so how, I know that there's been some things that have gone out to parents in the district, but for people that don't have children in the district anymore, how can we get the word out if there's people that are willing to substitute, especially in that district right now when we're crazy short of subs?
It would be interesting to see what commonality that those parents, pretty good parents have. I mean, is there a people group that we can put the word out to that you might think would be effective? We're willing to send it out to anyone. We have put it out on all the social media platforms as well, so if someone's following Alamo Heights.
Yeah, they may not be at the stage in their life, that's the thing.
It is pretty easy to find out on the website, so I would just encourage you all to kind of pass the word that if they're interested, you know, there's prominently posted on the very front landing page, just what needs to happen to become a substitute. Recruit those people.
David?
I appreciate this, and I agree with everybody, we've gotta do it. It's just a reminder, and I hate to be Debbie Downer, because we do operate in deficit budget world, and so we take this out of our bank account. And we're not a business. We don't have a way to raise prices and refill our bank account. And so every time we chip down that bank account, it's almost a permanent chip down. And so we just need to be mindful of that if we keep making budgetary decisions on a go-forward basis. We have to do this because we have to support the classroom. But at the same time, we've gotta keep being tight, we're gonna be tight. Frank, oh, he's not in here, or Mike, let's see about Mike, but to continue to find places where we can optimize and become more efficient in spending our dollars. I don't really need Debbie Downer, just wanted to remind us as we go through all these processes. I'm not there.
It's the reality we live in. We'd love to pay them a lot more, but your recommendation, I think it's a good one. I appreciate you coming up with that. Do I have a motion to approve the consideration of substitute staff compensation? Carrie, do I have a second?
Second.
David? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Passes forward to none. We will later on. Next item on our agenda. We've got to get through the consent agenda is next. These are items that are considered routine by the board or have been previously reviewed and discussed in prior meetings, and that we therefore enact with one motion. Is there anything any of the board members would like to remove from the consent agenda to consider as an item on the regular agenda? There being none. Before we address that, I would like to mention that we have received nearly twenty-eight thousand dollars in donations this last month, which, you know, especially in light of David's recognition, you know, these are tough times, and our community continues to support us in ways that really, you know, go directly to the students, so we appreciate it. There are no additional items to pull out. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Certainly.
David? Second?
Second.
Lisa? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Passes four zero. We'll next move on to the board member committee reports. First one up is assessment. Board member David Hornberger will do Alamo Heights School Foundation.
Oh my gosh, they are hard at work. Very appreciative for the efforts that this school foundation is continuing to undertake on behalf of our school district. So Dana spoke at the beginning and spoke a lot about the support that we're getting from our community for subs, for the classrooms. Very appreciative on that front. We communicated about new calendar next year with spring break moving back a week. And the parent teacher conferences at elementary school level being on a full day, so those kids will be, have a school holiday, only at the elementary school level for that full day. We also noted the Campus Teachers of the Year, which I think we're gonna celebrate in February, and then we'll name our district teacher later at some time. Brooke Menden talked about the Show to Love campaign, which was new last year, kind of on a whim. They kind of put it together, gave it a shot, and raised six thousand dollars out of the blue that they really didn't plan on. So they're very excited this year to build on that momentum. It's a social media challenge, kind of like the ice bucket challenge. There will be banners on each campus, where you can take pictures in front of it, fun pictures, goofy pictures, whatever, but it'll have a QR code that you can take a picture of. It takes you to the landing page where you can donate and contribute to the Show to Love campaign. We also talked about Reunited Heights, which is firmly set for February twenty-seventh. That's a Sunday at one P M. Our community, it's really like an all-class reunion. Everybody gets to come back. Rick Shaw's gonna emcee. He's been a great supporter of our community for decades. And we kind of get to highlight, I think it's the high school at the cafeteria.
At the Oaks.
At the Oaks, thank you. And so we get to highlight all the new work that's done on our campus. I know committee, community members who have gone and been really excited about our new buildings. We invited Janet to speak on Cambridge. We're having volunteers back in the library. It's been two years. They're very excited about that. Pals is back, where they take the Alamo Heights High School students to mentor Cambridge kids. It's about twenty-two high school kids and somewhere in the fifty of the elementary school kids. The counselors talked about the pals and the watchdogs programs, and also the kindness captains, who actually did attend the call also, and they were pretty awesome. They're communicating all the great things these kids are doing on their campus. Tammy Lawson talked about the after-school program that we've got on campus. And we mentioned we do have one package left from Greater Heights Night. There's still one package that's Spurs tickets, Sandy's Sweet, and a gift card to a restaurant. So if anybody is interested in that, they can give Heather at the foundation a call. And that was a lot that they went over.
The Show to Love is sort of, isn't it kind of in conjunction with our campus?
It is.
Yes, but I always forget all the time, so thank you for giving me the heads up.
The Spurs ticket would be a great one. Anyone listening out there? All right, we'll move on to item seven, Business Recommendations. First one is, we don't have a presentation on it, but this is a consideration to call the May seventh, twenty twenty-two Board of Trustees Elections. I know that Brian Hamilton is running for reelection on place two. David Hornberger is running for reelection on place one, so we have to call the election. Do I have a motion to approve the consideration to call the May seventh, twenty twenty-two Board of Trustees Elections? Carrie? Second? Lisa? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Passes forward to zero. On to seven B, we have a presentation of COVID leave resolution. And Frank Standage, welcome back to the table.
I just wanna start, this'll be very brief, and start with at the beginning and where we are now. You might recall back early COVID days in March of twenty twenty and April, that there was a government resolution called the F F C R, Family First Coronavirus Recovery Act, which mandated that certain employers give ten days of leave to all employees for certain COVID-related absences. And that expired on December thirty-first, twenty twenty. And the board, we all decided to extend that benefit to our employees all the way through the end of that school year, twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one. To start this year, we knew that COVID was starting to rise a little bit, so we set a benefit, and we recommended to you a benefit, and we approved five days for COVID-related absences. And the optimistic part was that we put an ending date, December thirty-first. So now we find ourselves in the same situation, and with Omicron, despite the phenomenal vaccination rates that we have with our employees, they're buying in and keeping themselves safe and healthy. We're seeing some breakthrough infections, and these, you know, our employees have done everything we've asked to keep themselves safe, but they now find themselves in mandated isolation or quarantine for five days. And that can be quite a hit for our employees. So we have a resolution in the board book that we continue this benefit for our employees. It's actually gonna be restarting the clock on January third and running through the end of this school year, where we will provide that benefit of five days of COVID leave with full pay for employee zone absence, or for two-thirds pay for an employee with care for a family member who's out for COVID-related reasons, who is incapable of self-care.
Any comments or questions? I have one question, and I remember you addressed this with us Wednesday morning, I couldn't remember. Is this adding an additional five days leave for this school year? Or is it basically just continuing the benefit of the five days that were first semester, whatever wasn't used, could be used the second semester?
So essentially, it's continuing the benefit. But there are those folks, though, who have seen the five, have exhausted the five-day benefit during the first semester, and they would be eligible for an additional five days if necessary.
So it's a new five days? Yep. That is absolutely fine. Any other questions or comments? Okay, with that, I've gotta read the entire resolution, so buckle in. Whereas the COVID-nineteen virus continues to spread throughout Fair County and the community served by the Alamo Heights ISD, and it has and will continue to have significant impact through the remainder of the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two school year, such that emergency action and authorizations continue to be necessary and in the best interest of students and staff of the Alamo Heights ISD. And whereas Alamo Heights ISD continues to consider advice and directives from federal, state, and local health authorities with respect to operating its public schools during the COVID-nineteen pandemic. And whereas, the board has a substantial public interest to protect the health and safety of Alamo Heights ISD's students, staff, their families, and community. And whereas, the board recognizes that during the remainder of the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two school year, employees may have need to be absent from work for reasons related to the COVID-nineteen pandemic. And whereas, the board further recognizes that employees who have need to be absent from work for reasons related to the COVID-nineteen pandemic, and may suffer a loss of pay if they do not report to work. And whereas, Texas Education Code, Section forty-five point one oh five, parentheses, little c, close parentheses, authorizes the board to expend school funds for purposes necessary in the conduct of public schools as determined by the board. And whereas, the board finds that a public purpose exists for providing an additional period of paid leave for employees who do not report to work due to certain COVID-nineteen-related reasons, and that employees may otherwise return to duty for personal financial reasons, and thereby risk their health and that of students and other staff. And whereas, the board further finds that providing additional paid leave to employees who do not report to work due to certain COVID-nineteen-related reasons serves the additional public purposes of protecting the health and safety of students and staff, demonstrating support of employees, enhancing morale, and supporting retention of critical and necessary employees. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Alamo Heights ISD had a lawfully called meeting of the board, held in compliance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, formally declares that, one, the superintendent or designate is authorized to offer employees who have voluntarily shown proof of COVID-nineteen vaccination and/or a valid medical exemption from vaccination, and have been directed to quarantine for COVID-nineteen-related reasons, have or are seeking a COVID-nineteen diagnosis, or must care for an immediate family member, as defined under the F M L A, incapable of self-care who is under quarantine for COVID-nineteen-related reasons, a period of five workdays of paid leave. This leave will be available to any qualifying employee from January third, twenty twenty-two, through the end of the school year, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, and applies only to absences incurred during those dates. Such leave will be compensated at the employee's regular daily rate of pay if the leave is needed for the employee's own personal COVID-nineteen-related illness or infection, or effort to seek such diagnosis, and at two-thirds the daily rate of pay if leave is needed for an immediate family member's COVID-nineteen-related reasons. Two, the board authorizes the superintendent or designate to make compensation decisions and adjustments to impacted employees as deemed appropriate to fulfill the purposes of this resolution. Do I have a motion to approve the COVID leave resolution? Carrie? Do I have a second?
Second.
David? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries forward to zero. With that, we'll move on to Section eight, Calendar Review.
Projected for us? Good. District Design Team meeting that Brian will attend tomorrow. We're gonna go virtual for that meeting for the sake of keeping our administrators and staff on their campuses in case we face another challenging day with shortages.
That's just Brian, correct?
That's just Brian, yes. We are hosting the morning walk at Woodridge next Monday, and Alicia is coordinating your R C P's and lunches. Special call meeting next Wednesday morning, January twenty-sixth. Just a reminder, as noted in my update to you all, we did decide when we were together for training last week to go ahead and place a Wednesday morning meeting following the board meeting. Now, it is an opportunity for us to have continued time talking through issues. And we'll have an Excel graduation on Thursday, January twenty-seventh. Those are always planned outside the mandatory patio unless, you know, there's that weather, and so we'll let you know if it changes from that location. I really encourage you to come if you're able to attend those. February ninth is our regularly scheduled G and P committee meeting in the boardroom. We have D E A C taking place Wednesday, February sixteenth. Stacy is our representative for the District Education Advisory Council. Foundation meets, David is our rep for that, February sixteenth as well. Regular board meeting, February seventeenth. And we have a district-wide staff development day, February twenty-first, that our district design team has been working on very thoughtfully with our instructional coaches, and that's gonna be a great day for our staff together. So any questions about the calendar? David?
Just a comment, like the Excel graduations are so meaningful and heartfelt and so individualized. And honestly, the stories of redemption are just, they're awesome. So the more of us can get there, I think it's, it really is cool. And they do it on the outside of the pool, and can really appreciate the new architecture there, so.
Yeah, it's one of the happiest things we do. All right, now this looks good.
You're a busy board.
Win hasn't. In the interest of an expeditious meeting, we took down the executive session for this, so with that, we are adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone.